Thank you, and welcome to the Committee of the Hall for February 6th. Just to say that we're today on the traditional territory of the First Nations. We've only got one agenda item today, so I'd have to recommend we adopt that, anybody? Susan and Peter. And before we move on to our delegations. Oh, on favor? Before we move on to our delegation, I'm trying to think of something I'd like to share with us.
I've previously declared a conflict with matters related to Quest University, but no longer under contract to the university until we withdraw my conflict. I'm going to stay in conversation.
Thank you. We have a delegation of students from Quest University. They're helping us increase the voter turnout. And so I thought maybe it would be good if we just went around to our room and introduced ourselves. So I'm standing in the air for a fact, she's a layman councilor.
I'm Councilor Ellen.
I'm Robyn Arthurs, GM of the Service Department.
Linda Vanry, too.
Well, you guys can go to each.
My name is Alexander Dribblenitz, an exchange student at Quest.
My name is Bryson Drayson, and I'm at my second year at Quest.
My name is Angus Harley, and I'm at my first year at Quest.
I'm Tyne Benjamin-Carens, and I'm at my first year at Quest.
I'm Doug Race, I'm a councilor.
Councilor Susan Paul.
Councilor Peter Ken.
And we've got Gary over there, these are number one, dark, and we're trying to find them all. So, okay, well, I'm just turning the floor over to you guys, I see your presentations, so.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Angus Harley, as I just mentioned, and we're the Monroe &amp; Co. Consulting Firm. And today, we're here to talk to you about how to increase voter turnout here in Squamish. So, at the last election, as all you guys know, the Squamish voter turnout was only 44%. And we've been tasked with the objective to increase turnout to 50%. And what we've come up with is a multi-tactic strategy in order to increase voting, primarily targeting youth voters. This is a strategy that involves several tactics, including a referendum, a social media campaign, flyers, and a few other things. So, we hope that by targeting youth voters, that this will begin the habit of voting early on, and it'll permanently increase voter turnout in the future. So, I hope you enjoy what we have to say.
So, the first means of communicating with people and informing people is through social media, through Facebook particularly. As social media's use is continuously on the rise, especially among youth, we're recommending tapping into that and getting the attention of particularly youth voters through Facebook. So, through, with just $200 over the course of the month leading up into the election, theoretically access 84,000 views, which, given the 19,000 person population of Squamish, would theory target all of them. Additional resources could also be used to retarget youth specifically, and in particular, those actually residents of Squamish, not just actually in the area themselves. And this would be done largely through the continuous use of certain images and messages that would become very familiar, because evidence suggests that the reuse of images leads to continuous recognition and recall of these messages and images. Such would be displayed not only on these Facebook advertisements, but also through posters and images displayed in the city. This would also be aided by the use of, on these advertisements, a link to the Squamish Council website, where additional information and voter registration, and other such things would be provided, alongside a catchy hashtag of "We Vote Squamish" that would, in theory, organically spread throughout other forms of social media, and through the continuous recognition of that hashtag and of that message, increase voter turnout.
To optimize the effectiveness of posters, we would recommend that posters depict a united community creating change together in activities common to Squamish, a message on a picture of a team, for example. This should be combined with the use of active language, and the dimensions of the poster should be less than standard in order to be more eye-catching. And the number of posters should be increased and strategically placed to high-traffic areas, such as bus stops, entrances to clubs, coffee shops, and grocery store cashiers. These are locations where people have to wait less than 45 minutes, as after that point, people become drastically less attentive to their surroundings. On this note, the posters should contain less than 12 points total. We also recommend this method of advertisement instead of television commercials, as recent studies have shown that television commercials don't have the effectiveness that warrants the cost. Many studies have evaluated the effectiveness of humor in advertisement to be a positive draw and a good method of increasing later recall of the message. In accordance to Plouvretti's, uh, which you, thanks. To Plouvretti's 2014 article, memes with political content also facilitate access into sometimes complicated fields of politics. The use of these popular culture elements enable democratic processes to be more inclusive and enhance participation in youth and young adults. We propose to create and distribute popular memes in image form, printed as posters for web advertising and general circulation, with political content regarding the October Squamish municipal election. This will increase youth and young adults' political engagement and voter turnout due to its accessibility and potential reach. Such memes must not be offensive or detrimental to any political actor, institution, or marginalized group. These are some examples that meet this criteria.
All right, so my name is Bryce, and our second proposal to increase voter turnout at Squamish would be to add a non-binding referendum question to the ballot. There's significant evidence that shows that this is an effective means of increasing voter turnout. A study which took, which looked at 26 years of political data in the states, found that ballot referendums had turnout rates of 3% to 4.5% higher in municipal elections, and 7% to 9% higher in presidential elections. The second study found that increases in 1.7% in voter turnout for each referendum question added to the ballot. So, on this note, we crafted three questions that focused on relevant and highly visible topics for citizens of Squamish, particularly those who are, that are relevant for youth voters, the demographic that we're largely targeting. So, the first one is, should the District of Squamish Council take a stronger stance against the development of Garibaldi Squamishki Resort? The second is, should the District of Squamish Council take more steps to increase affordable housing in Squamish? And the third is, should the District of Squamish Council support the development of an alumni association for the Cedar School District? So, in order to make these questions effective, their dissemination and the education about them has to be, has to be very prevalent. And so, we'd want to share these questions with the relevant and interested community groups, as well as publishing them on the District of Squamish website, and including them in some of the social media we have, tagging them with the "We Vote Squamish", in order to engage voters, and in a more direct way, that inspires them to participate in their democracy.
I'm Lily, I'm in my second year, or my first year at Quest. So, past research has shown us that inducing feelings of pride or shame can increase voter participation by up to 8.7% by mailing past voting records to citizens to encourage them to vote. That being said, the district can possibly raise voter turnout between 2.5% to 4.8% by mailing flyers to targeted voters. The targeted voters are to be determined by the map seen on Appendix, in Appendix B, which displays the areas of Squamish that hold low numbers of voters. We propose that flyers are printed and mailed to the areas on the map. The cost for the distribution of the flyers would be covered by the city's current mailing budget, and therefore, wouldn't take away from the funding of this project. That means the only remaining cost would be the cost for printing, which is estimated to be between 3 to 4 cents per flyer, or $40 for 1,000 flyers. We suggest they be sent out one to two weeks prior to the election day, and state the final date to vote. The final product should be a single sheet of paper delivered to the houses by mail that has a message to the citizen of the low voter turnout neighborhood, which should be on the other side of the map. And on the other side of the map, obviously. By following the strategy and the use of the flyers, we are confident that we can increase voter turnout by targeting specific areas in Squamish.
I'm Hannah, I'm in my fourth year at Quest. And so far, we've talked a lot about ways to make voting seem more appealing and interesting, more things that people want to do, but it's a little difficult to vote on something if you don't know what your choices are. So, we want to move into talking a bit about informing voters. Studies show that people tend to be a lot less informed about municipal elections than about, say, federal or provincial elections, which stands to reason, because municipal elections tend to be covered far less widely and by fewer types of media. But, that lack of information can prove a significant barrier in preventing people from voting. Because again, what use is a referendum question if people don't know what it is? So, to this end, we propose the addition of a webpage to the existing District of Squamish website, under squamish.ca, under the section Elections, entitled Ballot Information, which would contain the information on the ballot. So, the referendum question, and specifically what it entails to vote yes or no to it, we've discussed that the referendum question, or it's discussed in the paper in any case, that the referendum question should be a non-binding one because of how late it is. So, voters would know that by voting yes, they're just indicating their approval of the topic being pursued. And then, the website should also indicate the different positions and the candidates for each position. This wouldn't have to be a lot of information, just a name, a form of further contact, so email address, phone number, link to personal website, and then a short personal statement with experience, qualifications, platform, just in general, why they should be voted for. These, this information would all be provided by the candidates, and every candidate would be given the same amount of space. So, hopefully, this would give people both more information about what's on the ballot, and make them more inclined to trust it, since every candidate is given the same amount of space on a third-party posted website. We were inspired by this, or we were inspired for this, by the idea of direct-mail voter pamphlets, which are used in places like Washington State and Chicago. In the 2015 Chicago municipal elections, the use of direct-mail voter pamphlets actually increased youth voter turnout by almost a percentage point. But, we were thinking of using a webpage in Squamish as more effective for a couple reasons. First, because we're already going to be sending out flyers to low-voter-turnout neighborhoods, and we don't want to inundate people with mail. And also, because particularly the youth of Squamish tend to be somewhat elusive. A lot of them have a permanent address here, but spend a lot of their time somewhere else, or don't live at home, but just vote here. And so, the idea of having it be on a webpage, particularly with an easy-to-access URL, would mean that they can access the information from wherever they are. And because a lot of our campaigns centers around social media advertising and posters, if we just include a link to this website underneath each social media post, with, "For more information, go to," and then squamish.ca/vallotinformation, or slash "We Vote Squamish," something simple, people will be more inclined to click on it and find that information, and then also find places to access more. And our hope is that with that information available to them, people will have one barrier removed from voting, and be more likely to head to the polls on election day.
Hello, my name is Sarah Smilcy, I'm a first-year at Quest, and my proposal involves encouraging candidates themselves to do door-to-door canvassing in order to increase voter turnout. As to how this would be done, at the end of nomination period, candidates would be given a map in addition about the low voter turnout areas in Squamish, in addition to low voter age areas. And on the backside of this map would be statistics as to why door-to-door canvassing is an effective means of increasing turnout. An example of this would be seen in Appendix C. And as to this effectiveness of door-to-door canvassing, it has been proven to be more effective than phone calls, mails, and even emails in increasing voter turnout. In addition, a study that was conducted in New Haven, which only had about a 44% voter turnout rate, had that number increased to over 59%. This was done by an organization coming in and canvassing door-to-door in order to increase turnout. However, this proposal involves the candidates doing so, not an organization nor the city. On that note, the only cost to the city would be about $15 worth, assuming that there'd be 50 candidates running for office. In addition to each page of the paper, the map, and the statistics costing about 15 cents a page. Note that these prices are extremely high, and based on Quest printing prices, which are extremely high. As for, as for when this information would be given out, September 14th, at the end of nomination period, is when this information would be delivered to the candidates. My hope is that this would help increase voter turnout. Thank you.
All right, my name is Mindy Park. I'm a two-and-a-half slash third year, it's a complicated process. And I'll walk you through the public school outreach to achieve the same goal of increasing youth voter turnout through Student Civic Engagement Program. So, I present, I'm presenting this to you in the three-step process, the first of which is civic learning opportunities. Studies have found that adolescence is the most critical time for people to develop their civic and political identities, which makes education sector, including high school and middle school, the perfect timeframe to engage people and motivating and informing them about political processes. These civic learning opportunities can take various forms. It can range from simple discussion about current topics, what's going on in society, to simulations like mock elections, or learning about basic political processes, like how a bill becomes a law. These all are examples of civic learning opportunities. Exposure to these civic learning opportunities allows for what I call political socialization to occur from a young age. A lot of studies have found that youth are actually not inattentive to political processes, unlike most of Sigma that we are exposed to in mass media. It's been found that issue-specific advertising is found to be an effective strategy, especially when it comes to youth, because they are more inclined to engage in direct action in forms of lifestyle politics, community-based work, and basically, politics that emphasize self-actualization and self-expression. And this is why I strongly recommend open discussion of societal issues that promotes engagement with political issues and elections at schools. So, what we can conclude from here is that if we allow for our students to have exposure to civic learning opportunities, and allow them to engage in political socialization, it will give them an avenue of engagement to the political processes that are already inclined to be a part of. The impact of this is, the first will be able to have youth voters after high school graduation, when they are eligible to vote. They will be more likely to be politically active as adults, as studies have found that children receiving information about candidates, issues, and electoral process will be more politically active as adults. The secondary disparate effect is that the adults that are involved in actualizing this program, or the parents of the children that are participating in this program, are also more likely to vote during elections. The last disparate impact that this can result is that this will allow for more equitable distribution of exposure to civic learning opportunities. Today, there's a lot of discrepancy in the public education sector of what children are exposed to and what children are not. And this program will allow for people to gain more exposure to civic engagement and political processes of the community around them. So, today in Squamish, there are three schools that I specifically focused on, first of which is Howson Secondary School. I reached out to the vice-principal of the school. And they found out that the head of the Humanities Department, who's the social justice teacher, is already involved in civic learning opportunities at the school. Examples are student council voting, they hold mock elections for all municipal, provincial, and federal elections. The Cedar Sky Alternative School Humanities Department, and the Learning Expeditions Program, which is a part of broader Cedar Sky Learning Connections, has also expressed interest in engaging in this program. And John Ross Middle School has also initiated programs that are focusing on giving students to focus on working around the community and learning about civic-mindedness. So, we're already on the right track. So, how can the District of Squamish expand current efforts that are trying to get students to be more informed and more motivated? First of which is holding an electoral information seminar at these schools, containing information about voter registration, how do elections occur, how does a bill become a law, what happens in municipal political processes? We can even include flyers that we previously talked about, about these information. And another thing that we can do after holding electoral information seminars, that we can send out these flyers to graduating students with their final report cards that will increase the likelihood of the graduating students to vote in the Squamish municipal election. Another example is holding mock elections. So, as I mentioned earlier, Howson Secondary School is already holding mock elections. And the way that the District of Squamish can work more off of that is that the collaboration between the District of Squamish and the schools allow for a mock election that mimics the actual voting process even more. So, these can include things like producing ballots that actually look like the actual ballots that you would use in the voting processes during elections. We could have referendum questions that are more relevant to the students that are participating. We can even have a district staff member to hold training sessions for student volunteers. When they're running these elections, we can have voter rolls from the student information that the schools have. There are many avenues and ways to mimic the actual voting processes that will get students to be more inclined to vote by educating them more on these processes.
Cool, so, we just wanted to thank you for your time today. And we are very confident in the strategies that we presented to you guys. We've studied them very much, and we think that they will yield results. And yeah, we have our budget and our timeline laid out on the next couple of slides, if you have any questions about that. Yeah, thank you for your time today.
Do you want to go on to the budget and timeline before we have questions? I know there's going to be a lot of questions.
I think you can find the budget summary and the timeline in the reports that we gave you. There are also the budget summary up here. Timelines also.
Excellent, good day, and thank you so much for coming. I know I've got a whole list of questions here, but I'll open it up to the council, and then I'm going to ask the staff, or their employees, or his staff, who are the ones that are going to run the elections. Anybody from the council have any questions? Karen?
Thank you for your presentation. I'm curious, on the social media campaign you suggested running at Trump's September 20th to October 19th, is there any advantage to starting earlier, or just targeting that pre-election time period?
So, naturally, there is advantage to it.
Well, can I come up to the mic? The new mic should be in the upper part.
Is it up? Talking about what I'll do with this one, too. So, the, what's being balanced here is the advantage of reoccurring images in terms of recognition, and kind of burning it into, particularly if you are more actively using Facebook as a source of information, as a source of your own political awareness. But, that balanced against a concern we found, that if you see things too much, they become redundant and lose their value. So, to me.
Yeah, for this, we would recommend, so, if you look through the pamphlet, there's sort of a variety of memes that we've come up with. So, just having a variety of different advertisements, we'd recommend. And we also, largely, we decided not to go earlier for budgeting reasons, because on average, I believe the minimum is $5 per day, yes? So, just depending how much money you want to put into it, you can always put in more. This is just a conservative.
Definitely would be worth increasing as long as.
My second question, in the last election, there were all candidate debates. And in your presentation, you talked about the importance of encouraging candidates to do door-to-door, because it's that personal touch that encourages voter turnout. Do you see anything about, do you intend all candidate debates, are those important part of the process for their decision-making or their participation? Are there other ways to provide candidates with face-to-face youth, aside from door-to-door canvassing that might work?
Door-to-door canvassing seemed like the most feasible option when I researched this issue. Since door-to-door canvassing has been proven to be effective in other circumstances, I believe that having candidates meet face-to-face is probably the best, at people's houses, was probably the best way for them to do that.
Adding dates of debates to the webpage can also be really helpful, because a lot of what we found was that voters, or youth particularly, are really interested in direct action in politics. And I bet attending candidate debates would fall under that umbrella, but a lot of times, they don't know exactly how to do that, and are more inspired by, I mean, they, they want to get out and do things. A lot of youth tend to go to protests, or demonstrations, or whatever. And I'm sure that people would be interested in going to debates as well. But, as long as they know the dates of the debates, and have a reason to care about the candidates. So, maybe making that information available in compunction with other strategies, like the door-to-door canvassing, so that they know who the candidates are, and then are maybe inclined to go see the debates and see them talk to themselves.
Are youths affected by signage, or are they the cause of mischief?
Like outside, like plastic signs by the highway, and all that garbage?
So, you have to know, she didn't use signs.
I'm just wondering if that's something.
I use signs.
They use signs, too.
How do you feel about signage?
Part of our idea specifically for the youth was to create these alternative signs that aren't just necessarily your basic white and black. This is then, this is the day you come out. So, we're through the use of these youth-popular meme images and alternative designs that we might do a little bit extra to capture the youth's attention. And we can't speak specifically as to the turn-off to youth of the extra, the extra signage, but hopefully, with these memes and with these kind of vibrant images, that we might capture their attention.
I think, I'm sorry. I think a lot of it has to do with making the information relevant as well. Like, a sign doesn't necessarily have to be a turn-on or a turn-off, but if all you see is a name and vote for it, I don't know necessarily what would be on the signs. But, so, our strategy is aimed at making politics seem relevant, and seem like something that youth are interested in and informed about. So, signs can be an addition to other things, but maybe not on their own, I don't know.
Just, we found that, so, if we're thinking that youth voters are the group that we want to target, and they're the group that aren't voting as much as we want them to, we should probably make advertisement more relatable to them, something that, that makes it seem as though they, they're involved in, and that their vote will actually cause an effect in their community. So, just, just a change in the direction, that the signs are, poorly phrased there, just a change in the way that they're presented would probably have a huge effect.
So, I'll just, on the signs, would they be on the highway, or would they be with the building boards and?
Are you speaking of candidate signs, or?
Well, the ones that you're talking about.
The ones we're talking about? Yeah, we're just thinking of targeting high-traffic areas where, again, people don't have to wait for two months, that they don't become too used to their surroundings.
If I was running, I'd be happy to have your information on my sign. Now, would that be a conflict? Because you'd be allowing a run candidate to put their signs up?
What do you mean by our information on your sign?
Well, you're talking about a sign.
Yes.
And if I said, well, Ted Frye is running for council, I'll put your sign on my four by eight she-die-wood, with vote for Ted on the top.
Yes, that would be a conflict of interest, as we are making, we are making recommendations for what it could, what's the phrasing that I'm looking for?
I understand.
Increasing.
But, to staff, would they be allowed to have signs on them, either if they're not running? During the election, can people put signs out if they're not running?
Yes, you can, but you have to register in order to do that. If you're promoting, are you promoting the election, or are you promoting a candidate?
Election.
Okay, then you need a sign permit, and.
So, you guys have signs, you need permit. The other, you know, question, well, I'll just say that I've worked on a few different campaigns. I ran, this is my second term as a councilor. The most enjoyable part that I have found is the campaign, because of the high energy, camaraderie, and just, it's so much fun. And having a group like you guys work on a campaign, to me, would be, somehow, you have to figure out how to do that, as part of your lessons, is to either run a campaign or work on a campaign. I really liked what you said about the webpage, and I don't know, maybe Robby can help you out here. Were you talking about putting individual candidates' information on the district website? No?
That was initially the thought, but it maybe doesn't have to be. It wouldn't be that the district itself was promoting the candidates, but more providing a way to make information about those candidates available, a way to make information about those candidates available so that people know what they're voting for.
So if I might, so we put very specific candidate information in, and it looks just like it does on the ballot. So we put the candidate's name in the order that it will appear on the ballot, it appears in the newspaper, and it appears on the district's website. What we haven't done is linked to candidates, webpages and things like that, only for the reason that it's not all candidates have their own websites and things like that. It has to be a little play field. So we just give the information, but we don't actually provide a link. So we'll put the website information there, we'll put phone numbers there, but we don't link to it.
Does that help if you guys are thinking about the website?
I think knowing that it's out there helps. It's hard because when we looked at the website, we couldn't find candidate information because candidates haven't been nominated or declared yet, so I wasn't sure what is there and what can be there. But I come from Washington State, and there they send out voter pamphlets. And those include, and I'm not sure how those differ exactly from a webpage, but what is usually on those is each candidate will put their name, their experience and qualifications, and then some kind of personal statement. And those are typically as written by the candidates. If that's not something that can be done on the website, anything that leads to further information would be useful. That's the thought anyway.
I got Peter in mind.
You said it helps motivate you to use the vote, you said using either shame or pride. I think the amount of promotion you have, you have to let down to those.
So on the sample, let's see here, the sample, yeah, here we go, flyer that we were going to put out, on the other side, it says, it mentions that, like, we can see if you vote or not, and since you don't, we know, so we're targeting you. So like specifically targeting neighborhoods who have a high, low, like a low voter turnout, we're reaching out to the people who actually aren't voting so that we can try and make a difference that way.
So you worthless SOB, make yourself feel better by going out.
And the, my name's Nico. The three, the study we looked at had three different ways of approaching this. So one way was just sending out a pamphlet that said, here's a voting map, like, did you vote in this election? And another was sending out a pamphlet saying, you live like what we're recommending, you live in a low voter turnout area, like we're just saying your local democracy. And then the third one was sending out a letter saying, this is your voting record, it's public record that you didn't vote in the last election, like, we're going to be watching this next election. And that one actually brought up voting turnout by about eight percent. But it seems a little aggressive for...
Nobody studied the impact of setting the shelves on fire?
Two for Jason's beer.
Doug and then Susan.
Thanks. Well, I'm interested in the referendum because as you probably know, we've had, sometimes we're required to have referendums for borrowing and stuff like that. In the pool, for example, it took two, but it was a referendum that finally got the pool on the way. But occasionally, what you're talking about is kind of sampling opinion. And the only time I can think of in Squamish that happened was when council, to my amazement actually, I wasn't on council, but they had a vote about Walmart, that we wanted Walmart to vote for, for heaven's sakes. But anyway, it struck me, I mean, it's possible if we just had a referendum question such as, you know, are you inclined to say yes or no towards a large borrowing for New Ice Arena or something of that nature? It would have to be something we thought, we as a council thought was popular, otherwise, you know, we're sticking our necks out even putting it on a ballot. So if you had something like, people are asking for an ice arena, a second sheet of ice, for example, or expansion of Brennan Park, something that really appeals to a lot of people. Or is it just purely, I mean, is that the kind of thing that might attract people? Or are you trying to get the three topics you had there, you know, Garibaldi at Squamish, which I think if people sat and tried to understand, it would realize what a hot-button issue that is? Or affordable housing, which is almost a given, I mean, who says no to affordable housing? It's kind of, and then the third one was, we gotta vote it down, oh, the alumni association. But if you have something like that on a referendum ballot at the same time as an election, do you expect candidates to go out and take positions on it? Because you can find candidates, then get identified with these issues, and it can kind of, in some cases, complicate the campaign. So I just wondered if you thought about that or whether we have comments about that? Because I get the idea that you have some kind of a hot-button really type of issue that's going to bring people out because they want to express an opinion on it, and then they'll also fill out the ballot, which is right beside it. But can you separate the two? Do you expect counselors to campaign on them? Who might campaign on these issues? Is, you know, very often, like on a borrowing for an ice sheet or something, council says, well, we want their sheet, but we have to go out to borrowing. The council gets out there and campaigns for it. It's a council initiative, but they have to get elector sense for the borrowing. So on something like that, it's just kind of, kind of come out and it's like a paper poll, like, come up and express your opinion. And I just wondered if you thought about that or have any comments about that?
Well, my name's Emmy, and I'm thinking that it'd be important to strike a good balance between a contentious issue and one that doesn't require you candidates to pick a side. So if you're willing to perhaps pick a contentious issue to get the attention of the Squamish people, especially the youth, then going for the Garibaldi at Squamish Ski Resort would be a better question. But if you want to pick a less controversial issue, then perhaps the alumni association would be the question to go for because developing this association would be less contentious than the ski resort that's currently in place. And also because the election in October is for council members, we could, I mean, we would think that you wouldn't have to associate the referendum question with the candidates as well.
But if, like alumni from schools, that question versus Garibaldi at Squamish is kind of, it's kind of like Padlam compared to Garibaldi at Squamish, you know, is that the kind of question that might even get people out? Or would you want something that is really a hot topic in community, whatever it is at the time of the election? Sometimes it changes by the week, but whatever it is around election time, you really need that kind of polarizing issue to get people out. And then the question, I guess, is then what's the effect of an election? Does it kind of skew the election one way and you get a faction of people who are for this over here and are against it over here, and all of a sudden the voting goes that way instead of maybe a broader form of voting, people just on the marathon of us?
Well, I think that's a very kind of tricky situation, so that's the reason why we supplied three referendum question topics for the council to consider and decide which one would strike the balance between increasing voter turnout and not creating, I guess, an unbalanced voter turnout, as you said.
All right, you have your moments, Susan.
I think that those issues are hot-button issues, they're going to be contentious anyways in the election. And I appreciate that, Doug said that because it's amazing how you can relate the entire election to one issue that becomes a referendum issue. But I also see the value of asking public opinion that wouldn't normally come out. And if you have them on the ballot, they'll come out anyways and increase the turnout. My question is about accessibility to youth, youth accessibility to the vote, basically having more than one place to vote, or access to transportation, and how transportation affects voter turnout in New York.
Well, we did have a group that looked into mobile polling. So where do you like to see that?
So, hi, thanks, Ken. And we did a bit of research on mobile polling, and we kind of hit the wall of mobile polling's very, very restricted, who's actually allowed to participate. For example, we found out that if you took the mobile poll to the hospital, only patients there can vote, not doctors or anyone else can do it. So the idea of mobile polling is a very limited option that does have a lot of access. The other problem is, we were thinking if you don't, Squamish's public transportation system isn't the most reliable, not to be saying anything too offensive, but if you are without a car, it can make things a bit difficult to go on election day and vote. So that's why we wanted to try and figure out where, set up mobile polling in these or turnout areas that could be accessible to everyone within walking distance. But unfortunately, that didn't seem to be an option. So, and we also realized that you guys do make the bus free on election day, and that is a good step towards, but maybe if there could be a bit more constant of a schedule or two buses or something a little more helpful in that situation.
So on the all candidates meetings, I know that we've had all candidates meetings at Quest, it might not be just targeting students, but I'm, Chamber of Commerce comes after the candidates and wants to have an all candidates meeting, all the candidates go, the Quest students wanted to have an all candidates meeting, chances are, if all the candidates want to come up and present, so that's just a thought. So on the learning opportunities, how can we help with that as a...
So, is the question directed toward learning opportunities at Quest or learning opportunities in other secondary schools?
Well, mostly for the students, you know, anything that we can need to help. To get the voter turnout up is why you're here, so this has to be the main focus.
So my main focus was public education institutions that are in Squamish. And this was because I mainly prioritize the whole idea of equitable distribution of civic learning opportunities at a young age, during adolescence, where the civic and political identities develop, and it's the most critical timeframe for that. Which is why I reached out to these schools to see like what programs they were already doing and how the District of Squamish can work with them to produce energy. So for House and Secondary School and Sido's Go Turnout School, for example, House and Secondary School, because it's bigger, it's running mock elections, like I mentioned earlier during my presentation. And one way that the District of Squamish can make that even more effective is to try to help the school out in mimicking the actual voting process as much as possible. I mentioned the example of producing fake ballots that resemble the actual ballots. We could have like a staff member from the District of Squamish to come in during these mock election dates and have a training session with student volunteers to run the election. And, you know, there's various ways that they can actually feel like the municipal election processes and the political processes are actually accessible to them and is available to them. So it's more about allowing the youth in public education institutions to find out about concrete avenues of engagement after graduation, like specific information about what it looks like, what it is, how they can participate.
Yeah, in my first election, there was actually an all candidates meeting at the high school, which was well-attended, actually, there were some great questions that came out. And that was organized, I think, by, talked about by the student council, one or two particular people that wanted the candidates out. And that was great, and I don't know why it didn't happen following elections, but it could have. And the candidates all came out, it was great.
Yeah, like many studies have found, like youth are actually very engaged in political processes. And when these events do happen, like the election information seminar or the all candidate meeting, that are actually taking place at school, where students have the greatest likelihood of exposure and accessibility to them, it will allow them to be voters when they graduate high school.
Question is, do we know what our youth turnout is and can we track that? So if the voter turnout goes up, will we be able to tell which demographics contribute to that?
We, we don't take or page and pages at all. What we can do is look to voter statistics and see if they've got any information on his baseline, use his baseline from the last election, and simply can track from there. And they may record voter registrations and have something that distills ages of it, but we don't, we use a fringe of voters list, and it's just not a, we don't look at demographics.
Will we allow to collect that information?
It depends what we're using it for, but we probably can, it just depends what we're using it for. It slows down the voting process when you're collecting more information than what people are there to do. And you also don't want it to track from, you know, if you're sitting there getting information from people who are registered to vote, and they want to get in, it might deter them from having a quick process. They were better off to try and go through the progress, go through elections, be see the vital stats where they share information.
Anything else? So I noticed in your report, there was a $635 figure down there. Is that what you're asking us for?
Of course.
Is that your budget or is that our budget?
So, way at the beginning of this project, we were told that we were given a $1,000 budget for doing or taking the, for creating a strategy in order to increase voter turnout. So that's coming out of that budget.
So the rest of us...
We're just going to divvy it up amongst the class.
Yeah, just to chip in to the budget conversation, residency for the high school program, I noted that the total costs are minus administrative costs because I wasn't sure how much we're willing to put in to mimic the voting processes and how much money actually goes into labor costs and et cetera. And so for that specific proposal, it really depends on to what extent we want to take it to. Do you think you also have a question area?
If I may, when we have gone to the high schools during the election, have we do take food and other things to attract people to stay behind and take part and listen to us? So there would be a, you know, maybe $200 or something. So you're still well within the task.
As far as back to learning opportunities, I know that the mayor and our council is always happy to see you guys here. And many other classes that you're in, if you think, you know, we can help or input, it's exciting to have you here. And also, all our council meetings are video archived, and you've got a really big system of putting everything in, so track our agendas. And when, when you do the classes, you can go back and watch us. Might give you a reason why you don't want to run the politics. So anyway, you know, that's just information for you. And I think the archive is really good for stuff. Anyway, so staff, you guys got stuff to offer?
Absolutely. I want to thank you for this. It is full of a lot of useful takeaways. I appreciate fully how much went into putting this together in each of the areas. And Charlene up there, she is the deputy chief election officer. So we are going to take this away and we're going to extract from it a lot of, a lot of things that we're going to implement. And I really love the hashtag. We haven't ordered our pins yet for this year, but we'll probably utilize the hashtag on the pins, get them out early, and we make them available, candidates can take pins away as well, you know, if everybody in Squamish has, with the date, we'll add the date to it. You know, reminds everybody to get out and vote. That's really great. There's a lot, a lot to think about, but I think that you're good, what you've done here is going to help get the youth in voter turnout, but the overall voter turnout, I think there's so much in here that it affects the general population, not just youth. And you guys represent an... And you guys represent an engaged youth and I want to thank you for putting this together and coming in and presenting. I think we got our money's worth from my own company. Absolutely, we're the winners.
Who came up with the name Morocco?
Bonus grade for that.
Any other questions from you guys or?
Do you have any questions to ask?
Don't ask while we're doing.
Other insights?
Thank you so much for that opportunity.
Yeah, thank you for that opportunity. This is great. It's been a really great learning opportunity.
Great piece of work, thank you.
We'll see how it all turns out, won't we?
Yeah.
And usually in an election, there's at least two groups that sit around and they'll sometimes see every turn around. It's going to be fun and I hope to see you guys over there.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Oh, nice.